Roll call, please.
Dr. Cordelina?
Here.
Mr. Daughtry?
Here.
Mrs. Fanna?
Here.
Dr. Bodrack?
Here.
Mr. O'Brien?
Here.
Mr. Rappaport?
Here.
Ms. Suckerman?
Here.
Mr. Palmer?
Here.
Grau?
Here.
Mr. Perici?
Here.
Mr. and Ms. Ammer? Here.
Uh, plaudential agents, please. Thank you. Mrs. Slunt, the Sun Channel, please.
The New Jersey Open Public Meeting Law was enacted to ensure the right of the public to have advanced notice of and to attend meetings of public bodies at which any business affecting their interests is discussed or acted upon. In accordance with the provisions of the Act, the Montville Township Board of Education provided a public notice of this meeting, which included the time, date, and location that was posted at the Montville Township Municipal Building, all Montville Public Schools, the Montville Public Library, the Montville Township Board of Education Administrative Office Building, the district website, and advertised in the Daily Record, the board's official newspaper, on February 5th, 2022.
Thank you very much, Katinka. All right, we have our high school reps. I don't know who would like to go first?
So I'm gonna go first.
I'll let Mike close, okay?
Okay. Hi, my name is Jolene Ammer. I'm a senior at the high school. So the MTHS Theater Company had a very successful turnout for the three-night play, the twelfth night. Fall sports seasons have successfully ended, along with the first marking period of the school year. The girls volleyball team makes history as they win the NJSIAA Morris County Tournament in the North Two Group Two Sectional Championship for the first time ever. And last night, there was a shared the keys of the presentation.
Hello, I'm Aaron Perici, and I'm gonna be talking about the present news at Montville High School. So, Mr. Barely actually joined the international business practice from honors class to speak about his business experiences. I'm very proud to say that I'm a part of this class, and hearing him talk, it was just really valuable to hear all the information he had to provide and about his business experiences and how I could apply this in my own life. This week, Key Club will be collecting donations for the Thanksgiving Food Drive, so students are bringing in imperishable foods and canned items such as soup, beans, and pasta. The winning home run with the book sales will win some doughnuts, so we're excited for that. Students aren't coached to donate to better the community. Our hockey team captains this year were recognized for a ceremony at the Presidential Center. Eugene Kang and Samantha Coe won the NJ Youth Leadership Award, sponsored by the New Jersey Chinese Teacher Association. The manner students Eugene and Samantha were only two of 20 students in all of NJ schools giving this award, so we are very proud of both of them. The future business leaders of America Club is holding a Batman tournament tomorrow in the main gym. This will be a great interactive way for the organization to raise money. I will be participating, so I'll give them my best go.
So I'm gonna share some future news that should be happening at Montville High School soon. The Montville students participated in a solidarity week, which is a student powered campaign dedicated to building collective support for LGBTQ+ students and educators. Students were challenged to practice solidarity by wearing different colors throughout the school week. Winter sports will be starting next Monday and the following Monday, the 28th, for sports like swim team, ice hockey, competition cheer, basketball for boys and girls, wrestling, bowling, and winter track. Auditions will be held for Joseph and the Technicolor Dreamcoat, which will be our spring musical this year, and those will be held on November 28. Student Council will be having their senior banquet on December 2nd, and this will be a great event held at Il Tu Plano, where students can socialize and dance and have a great time, and we all look forward to this experience. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And, uh, thank you very... Thank you very much for your excellent report, and good luck with the food drive, because I know a lot of citizens in town are looking for that food for the holidays, and you guys did a tremendous job. Tell there to tell with hamburgers and pasta, and thank you in advance for that effort. Do we have any questions, or are our students ready? Thanks a lot.
Can I just say something to Jolene? Jolene, thank you so much. You sang again for the Veterans Ceremony, and I can't tell you how beautiful, what a beautiful job you did. You always call in the FW, you know, community, and it was wonderful. So thank you, dear.
Congratulations, we very appreciate it. Thank you, guys. Very pleased you stayed or if you don't, welcome back to you. Next part of the agenda is the second gentleman's report. Dr. Dorman?
It's wonderful to see so many people here tonight. Really grateful you came out here and recognize all our students and other people. With the end of the first quarter, I've just updated the board with the board goals. We made considerable progress, and we're on track to completing all of our goals this year. I'll begin another update at the end of the second quarter. I also wanted to update the board on the illness, the vulnerability outbreak at Cedar Hill. It looks like everything's under control right now. For several days there, it looks like a virus went through the school. It lasted about two days. Some students had it for three days. We did some testing of the air quality as well as the water, but we'll get the results back shortly. But we were in constant contact with the health department, and everything looked like there was some kind of stomach bug, some kind of virus, and we did many deep cleans of the building. We did a lot of touch points. We even hired a mattress custodian for a couple of days there to make sure we kept the place clean. So we just want to remind parents, whenever the child is being sick or not feeling well, please keep them home so that they get better and hopefully come back to school. Also, an update to the board, we've also seen an increase over the past two years with enrollment to our schools. We believe this is a result of more families moving into town. Because of this increase, along with the completion of the new housing projects, we've asked for an updated statistical forecasting study to be done to relook at the numbers that were projected last year. In addition, we have asked the architect to update the building usage capacity analysis. This will give us a better idea about how the classroom spaces are being used. These reports and these numbers will be coming back to us sometime in December. I'll be reporting after the board about what they think. And that's it for now.
Okay. Next, Dr. Dorman?
Esposito, step forward. So after a rigorous selection process by the New Jersey Department of Education, Principal Dominic Esposito of Woodmont has been chosen as the 2022 New Jersey Exemplary Educator. Only 181 educators in the entire state this year received this certificate. Mr. Esposito has demonstrated exceptional teaching and leadership abilities, and as an exemplary leader, Mr. Esposito has had a positive impact on students, colleagues, and the school community. Congratulations. Well, I appreciate this recognition, and I guess the saying, remove the belt tolls, I never thought it would toll for me, so I appreciate it for my Woodmont colleagues. The only thing you really can say when you receive something like this is thank you. Those are the best words that exemplify what this award means to me. It's a sense of gratitude, and it really is not my award. It is just a reflection of the number of individuals who have worked for us over the years, the last ten years, to make Woodmont just an incredible place to work. And I just wanted to take a few moments just to thank everyone, starting with my wife, Diane, who's back there. My daughter Julia did not be with us this evening, but 10 years ago, when I was hired at Woodmont, I said to my wife and daughter, we're in the big leagues, so we're gonna have to make some sacrifices. They certainly did. My administrative colleagues will remember our first couple of years. It seemed like all we did were observation. We had to do three observations on taken staff for and not taken staff. So the board observation became a dirty word in my house. We just had to call it the old word. It seemed like every weekend, every evening, I was working on observations, but that's a sacrifice that my wife and daughter made for us to be successful. I want to thank my central office colleagues, Dr. Shorter, Mrs. Woodring, and our great superintendents over the years. Casey and I, we work very closely together, and he will deny his part in Woodmont's success, but he truly has helped me, guided me, provided a lot of wisdom over the years, helped harness my enthusiasm, my energy, and directed in a successful fashion. So I'm always indebted to Casey for his guidance, his wisdom, and his friendship. Andrew's always been there with instruction, always there to give us resources, always there to give us ideas, to bounce ideas off of. We're deeply indebted to her for that. We have three amazing superintendents that I've worked on her. The late Dr. Paul Free. I'll never forget Paul, he was the one who gave me this opportunity. Paul taught us how to learn to listen and how to take criticism. I don't know how we've been able to absorb such criticism. He never took it personally. Renee Rogitar, the superintendent nominee for this position, this award. Renee always challenged herself, always taught us to get out of our comfort zone, to lessons that I'll always internalize. It helps to be a better individual and make our lives more enriching. And even now, Dr. Tom Gorman, Tom and I quickly formed a friendship. I certainly ascribe to his philosophy of kaizen. It's something that we do at Woodmont, that sense of continual self-improvement. No matter how good you think you are, you can always feel a little bit better. It's something that we really believe at Woodmont, and we're grateful for that. Tom is bringing it to the district and promoting it. And then finally, just to my Woodmont colleagues, my faculty, our parents, our students, this award, it might say my name on it as exemplary educator, but the people who are behind there, they are truly the ones who are deserving of being recognized as exemplary educators. It's an amazing staff. You have no idea, those of you who come into the building for various events, you know how positive the culture is, you know the energy level. It's a wonderful gift to be able to say you love to go to work every day. And I love to go to work because of those individuals. They put their effort in, they're cooperative, and just stick to the mission of student learning, student growth, and as a result, we're getting great things happening every day at Woodmont. So I'll thank you for your time. I appreciate the board's acknowledgement. And again, to my colleagues and families, I thank you very, very much. Dominic, as a Woodmont parent, I'm so proud of you. I'm so proud of what you've done for Woodmont. It's always been a great school, but you've taken it to a whole other level. You've made Woodmont into a premier school. I can tell much everybody loves being there. The kids love being there. You can see it on videos. And all the people who are here came to support you, and of course, it wouldn't be at Woodmont if not without the cowbell. Congratulations again on a award very, very golden.
Dr. Dorman, that's probably appropriate.
All right, high school, okay. All right, we have Mr. Nadsick from the high school, assistant principal there. He's gonna be talking about the ShopRite Stars Awards. We have five recipients tonight.
Hi, good evening. I'm thrilled to present our ShopRite Stars for the first marking period of 2022-2023 school year. This school year marks our 22nd year of participation in this incredible program. Tonight's stars, as always, nominated by faculty members in all five different categories, and the winners were selected by administrative committee. In addition to the recognition of these wonderful students here tonight, Sunrise ShopRite generously donates $1,000 to the entire class of 2023. Please join me in congratulating each of our stars this evening in the field of academics. Congratulations to Brendan and Glenn. Having a 4.6-plus GPA would define most students, but that isn't even the most impressive and incredible thing about Brendan. The fact that he's been able to maintain that impressive GPA while also contributing to the MTHS community in meaningful and profound ways truly sets him apart from many others. In the building, Brendan is president of our Key Club, FBI event coordinator, and head of the Stock Market Game, co-president of the Math Club, and inductee into the National Honor and Italian Honor Societies. Brendan's exceptional talent has been recognized in a variety of ways. He was accepted into the New Jersey Governor's School of Engineering and Technology in 2022, is a 2022 National Cyber Scholar, and a 2023 National Merit Commended Scholar. In addition to all of the above, and of course, current course load of seven AP classes, including research in molecular biology and multivariable calculus, Brendan received the President's Volunteer Service Award because of his community service work with Pathways here in town. Brendan is still applying to colleges and plans to pursue a major in aerospace engineering. Again, congratulations. In the field of athletics, congratulations to Joe Labor. Joe gave the entire MTHS community some exceptional highlights during the last four years, especially this year as quarterback of our football team. Joe's talent and leadership on the field gave us a winning record and a competitive home playoff game, but in one of his most defining games, Joe went 12 of 16 through the air for 261 yards and five touchdowns in the season opening win against Morris Catholic. In the same game this year, Joe carried the ball 13 times for 70 yards and a touchdown. For his performance, Joe was recognized as the New York Jets and Gatorade High School Player of the Week, which is a truly outstanding accomplishment for any athlete. In addition to playing baseball and football for four years and basketball for two, Joe's been able to maintain a 3.7-plus GPA with rigorous courses, including AP and honors level classes. When he's not contributing in the classroom or on the field, Joe gives back in other ways through volunteering at Pathways, teaching younger children about sports. Joe is still applying to colleges, but wants to continue playing football in the fall and plans to pursue a degree in kinesiology and exercise science. Again, congratulations. In the field of the arts, congratulations to Eugene Kang. Eugene has been described as immensely talented musician who is incredibly humble and giving. For eight years, Eugene has been playing and perfecting violin. Our first glimpse of her greatness was at a winter concert, where she earned the rare opportunities of freshmen to perform as a soloist. For four years, Eugene has graced our entire community with the gift of her music. For example, Eugene's quartet has played for Chelsea in Montville, at state school board meetings, TRIM functions, the 2021 MTHS Hall of Fame induction ceremony, Montville Garden Club, and also here at World Envyers. Currently, Eugene is Concert Mistress of the Orchestra and Chamber Orchestra, and president of the TRIM Music Honor Society. In this capacity, Eugene is currently coordinating fundraising opportunities for the upcoming trip to Disney World and assisting with the planning of a children's concert later in the spring. Despite the countless hours practicing and performing, Eugene has maintained a 4.1 GPA, is treasurer and vice president of the Chinese Honor Society, where she was recognized this evening for her work, and president of our Christian Club. Eugene is still applying to colleges, but plans to major in psychology and, of course, continue her career in violin. Again, congratulations. In the field of community service, congratulations to Sahana Vaada. Sahana has given back to our shared community on both small and large levels. Locally, Sahana has been a member of Girl Scouts since first grade, and recently earned her Silver Award, which commemorates 50 hours of service. For her silver award, Sahana promoted the use of reusable bags and raised awareness about other environmentally friendly practices to maintain the beauty and preservation of our community. Sahana is currently awaiting approval to pursue her Gold Award, which requires at least 80 hours of community service. On a more global scale, Sahana currently volunteers virtually at STEM Center Africa. In this capacity, Sahana currently runs a STEM-based female empowerment book club for girls ages 8 to 12 in Kenya. The support and education Sahana provides to this population is absolutely incredible, and we applaud the valuable work she does. In addition to her service, Sahana currently interns at the Cognitive Neuroscience Laboratory at Montclair St. University and presented recently at the 2022 Eastern Psychological Association Poster Conference. Sahana is also editor-in-chief of the MTHS News Magazine and inductee into the National Honor Society, TRIM Music Honor Society, and Spanish Honor Society, and has also been published in the Brain Sciences Journal. Sahana is still applying to colleges and plans to double major in psychology and English. Again, congratulations. And in the field of leadership, congratulations to Shriya Malochia. Shriya currently holds numerous leadership positions in a variety of different fields. For example, for the past two years, Shriya has been the woodwind captain of the MTHS Marching Band. Shriya is also president of Life Science for the Science Olympiad and co-director of the STEM Summer Camp. Because of the way that she's conducted herself in leadership positions, Shriya has also received some individual accolades, including winning three Science Olympiad New Jersey State Medals and obtaining the Presidential Volunteer Service Award for her work in Pathways, where she is currently the director of beginner technology courses. Shriya has even been selected as a student scholar or teaching assistant here at the high school in research in molecular biology last year and assists in instruction and management of the class this year. The reason why Shriya was selected as the recipient for this award was not because of the flashy titles or personal achievements, rather Shriya exemplifies all of the characteristics that we should look for in our leaders. She is intelligent, empathetic, honest, and regularly looks for ways to help those around her become better. Shriya will become a leader at any college she chooses to attend and plans to pursue a degree in biomedical engineering. Again, congratulations to Shriya and to all of her friends.
All right. We have one more presentation. We have some students from high school. We're gonna be talking about their science research projects. So we have several students. Just grab the microphone, introduce yourselves, and then talk about your projects.
Hello, and good evening. We are the students of the Science Research Program, and we would like to thank Dr. Gorman and the Board of Education for having us tonight. We are excited to share details about our course and what we are currently working on. Let me introduce myself. I'm Anjay Patel, senior in the program, and I am currently studying cold shock proteins and the modeling of these proteins. Over the summer, I conducted research at Rensselaer Polypeptic Institute with Dr. Montellioni, where I learned about protein modeling and using bioinformatics tools such as AlphaFold to predict protein structures. So right now, I'm still in contact with him to continue my research on cold shock proteins specifically in E. coli throughout my senior year.
Thanks, Anjay. The Science Research Course is a three-year program that allows us to perform independent research in a field of our choice under the guidance of a mentor. In the classroom, we have bi-recon meetings where we get guidance, discuss what we've learned, set our own individual goals, and assess our progress. Hi, everyone. I'm Peter Elias, and I am senior in the program, and I am currently studying upper limb and lower limb prosthetics with sensory feedback, and I've been in contact with Dr. Makos and his prosthetic team. And just last week, I went to the Veterans Affair Medical Center and was taking through the research and construction process of prosthetics for veterans, and I will be continuing the research with them.
Thank you, Peter. In addition to studying independently and collaborating with our mentors, we sharpen our presentation skills by engaging in both individual and group presentations during class. We provide each other with valuable feedback that'll help us achieve our future goals. Hi, everyone. My name is Ishani Patel, and I am a senior in the Science Research Program. I'm currently studying the effects of sleep and social media on adolescent mental health. I'm conducting this research with the Hamilton Lab at Rutgers University, and we use recent technologies such as activity and ecological momentary assessment to identify respective factors for the potential development of depression, as well as creating intervention programs to help these teens throughout the state and the nation.
Thank you, Ishani. Our culminating research projects are showcased yearly at the annual Science Research Symposium in June. This June will be our 11th Annual Science Research Symposium.
Hello, everyone. I'm Kalya Shung, and I'm a junior in the Science Research Program, and I'm currently studying the effects of microplastics in lakes. I've conducted my own research on lipatton in Lake Mercer, and I am contacted with a potential mentor. I hope to conduct research this summer on lipatton when there's a further of my research.
We present our research at the symposium with oral presentations on the stage in our own high school auditorium. We welcome questions from the audiences on any more presentations.
Hi, everyone. My name is Ava Custodi. I'm also a junior in the program. I'm currently studying immunology and am expanding my own knowledge by researching antibiotic resistance with Dr. Farhad Karid, a professor from NJIT.
We then conclude our symposium with our individual poster presentations, where we get to interact with our guests on a more personal level and explain our research in greater detail.
Hi, everyone. I'm Ananya Bhatt. I'm a junior in the program, and I'm currently studying epigenetics. I've been researching within the field of epigenetics while contacting various researchers from different universities to find a mentor. For those who don't know, epigenetics is a study of gene expression without the alteration of a DNA sequence. We look forward to seeing you all in June. Welcome to the district, Dr. Gorman, and thank you again for having us.
This is very wonderful. Thank you so much for... Does anybody have any questions? Most of that went over our heads.
I am so impressed with all of you, really. And I know Peter, him and I used to pick great leaves together, and now he's this young man, and it's just so wonderful seeing all of you. So keep doing the good work. It's wonderful.
Thank you very much. Also, some of us were on the board when this program, excuse me, started under Dr. Freed, and I'm glad to see it continuing, and I think by your presentations tonight, and then when we come to the big presentation, we're very proud of what you have accomplished. We're very proud of the direction you're sharing with your colleagues, and I wish you all the best to the juniors for next year and to the seniors for when you go to college, whenever you choose those colleges. But again, thank you so much for participating.
We have some good news on the agenda, in addition to the last week, the last inning. We have the Section Q, which is doing reports, facilities and finance, and I'll be going in.
Thank you, Charlie. The Society of Finance Committee met this prior to the board meeting. As Dr. Gorman mentioned earlier, demographic study is being reanalyzed and will be having results of that in December, and the committee did sort of a deep dive into the loan rate facility plan.
Thank you, Eugene. Quick on instructions, we have a meeting coming up, David. We have a meeting on December 6th. All of you personnel, Mr. O'Brien.
Tonight, we will have the first reading of several policies. First reading of several policies, which are pertaining to bullying, to virtual instruction. Policies are in your folder, in your agenda for your review. You can review those.
Thank you, Michael. Communication, Michelle.
No report.
Safety and security, Mr. Rappaport.
No report.
Ladies and school boards, Karen.
Thank you, Charlie. On November 4th, the Board of Directors of New Jersey School Boards met, sort of a debrief of the workshop that was just held last month. There were 6,000 attendees, 351 vendors, 68 sponsors, 275 training programs, 530 members who completed mandated training, a total of 519 dozen cookies, that's a recent to go, 14 student performances, and 12 therapy dogs over the course of two days. In terms of financial report, 99.9% of annual dues for the 2223 fiscal year have been paid by the state school districts. NJSPA also had an independent audit for fiscal year 2122, which reflected positively on the association's business and financial operations. The new executive director convened a dues formula committee, which is being chaired by Vice President Tammy Smith. She's Vice President of Finance. The purpose of the committee is to review the current NJSPA dues formula, determine its appropriateness, and make any recommendations for change or update. The delegate assembly will meet this Saturday, November 19th, at 9 o'clock. There is one resolution that has been filed, and there will be proposed reaffirmation of various policies. The new executive director has created something called a Situation Room. This is in order for New Jersey School Boards to react to new, but kind of semi-urgent news, so that board members will have accurate information so they can respond to their constituents. That completes our report.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, Charlie. I'm sorry. Forgive me. There is just one more thing regarding New Jersey School Boards. I guess last month or the month before, they conducted a session for candidates. It was, one of the sessions was here at our high school. Now they're conducting New Jersey School Boards' three Rs: roles, responsibilities, and resources. And this is a program designed for new and not-so-new board members. In the topics will include the functions of a Board of Education, board member responsibilities, services available to you from NJSPA, strategies and tips to survive and thrive your first year of service. And once again, Montville Township High School will be hosting this meeting on December 1st, and I would urge any newly elected school board members to attend this meeting.
December 1st at the high school, right Karen?
Yes, and it's...
It's at 9 o'clock, probably.
We all can attend if we want, but it is designed for new school board members.
Thank you. Mr. O'Brien.
I have no report.
Morris County had services, Joe?
Yeah, we had a meeting on November 9th. We actually had a presentation by the Special Services Department over what they offer to non-public school students, such as textbook purchasing, technology purchasing, computers and such, nursing services, regency aid to the non-public schools, and also to non-public school students requiring special education services. So that's the presentation. Our next meeting is going to be on December 21st.
We still have meetings?
Yep.
All right. Drug awareness, Joe?
We had a meeting back on November 9th. Our next meeting is December 1st. We actually have our awards ceremony this Thursday for all of the students that participated in the poster contest. It'll be at Lizar at 7 o'clock. You can get a 300 piece of that chalk, and so it's our first time doing this awards ceremony since the fourth.
Thank you, Joe. I'd like to let you know, Mr. O'Brien.
No report. They did not meet yet. They didn't set a meeting date.
Okay. Elias on Cedar Hill, Karen?
No, unfortunately, I missed the last meeting, but I missed it for a good reason. I was having a boy scout event on November 3rd. Every year, the Boy Scouts Patriots have council awards, a Montville Good Scout Award, and three of our community members were selected for this award this year: Reverend Hengian, Joe O'Dowd, and our own Mike Palmer. So congratulations, Mike. Mike was not able to attend, unfortunately, but I'd like to congratulate him here tonight.
Yes, Mike, it was a privilege going to the meeting. Unfortunately, we not gave her credit. She wrote everything nice about it, just like you told her to, and she did a great job. But it was a nice affair over at the Saunders at the Mediterranean Room.
All right. Hilldale, Nathan Valley View, next meeting's on January 11th. Nation?
No meeting, but just a reminder that their gala, Denim and Diamond's Tricky Trade fundraiser will be November 17th.
We not... No report.
Lizar?
They're having their next meeting on December 5th, and I'd also mention that they are holding a fundraiser for LNN, Lizar News Network, and are trying to raise funds to get equipment, make them into a mobile TV studio, so they can travel around and cover the needs.
And finally, the high school.
Yes, we met on November 7th last week, and some of these items are a repeat from what the student reps had mentioned, but some of the highlights from the meeting were the senior class banquet will be held on December 2nd at Pilategano. The week of December 19th will be the Winter Spirit Week, capped off with indoor events on Friday. One of the things that struck me during the meeting was a presentation by Ms. Sackes, and she had described a six-word memoir project that was given out to the students, and it was just fascinating to hear how the students interpreted the challenge and how the students presented their responses to a six-word memoir, six-word presentation, and I thought it was a very good exercise and was very interesting. In the foreign languages area, the students taking Mandarin are working on a Chinese New Year celebration, including fan dances, Kung Fu demonstrations, and other artistic expressions. The students are looking forward to showing up for hard work somewhere near the Chinese New Year in mid-January, and I believe it's that the parents are welcome to come and watch the presentations. November 17th is the date for picture retakes at the high school, and in December, continuing through January, teacher recommendations for students for next year's classes will begin to be submitted, so everyone could be looking out for that. Using the new midterm schedule, right now, I believe the midterms are scheduled to be held from January 26th through February 1st, but I believe Mr. Sanford said that dates may change if they can figure out the best way to move it to the beginning of the third quarter rather than the end of the second quarter, but it'll be close to those dates. Outside of the PTC meeting, but also going on at the high school, the 12th Night Play, which was very good, it was held, had some music sprinkled throughout, was performed on the stage, and the kids did a wonderful job. I was able to see the Friday night performance, and it was a lot of fun to watch. Also, I listened in to the new study abroad program. This is a new program of Ms. Tamara Spitzer, who's, I think, started this year at the high school, brought in an outside company to help organize and manage the study abroad program, and this is the first I heard of it. I didn't know that we had a study abroad program or even considering it until I saw the advertisement for it, and I saw this, and I was very interested, and hopefully more parents and families will be interested and will reach out to Ms. Spitzer for the information, to get the information and explore those opportunities for the kids for the summertime. And finally, I also happened to have a great conversation with Sandra Schwartz, she's left, unfortunately. She's the supervisor for the math, science, and business departments, and she was providing information about the changes that are going on in her area, such as pushing math opportunities to the lower grades, such as moving geometry to Lizar, and being able to hold a multi-varied calculus course at the high school. And I think there's six kids, if I'm not mistaken, taking that class. So being able to present those opportunities to the kids who are able to take the advanced math classes, I think is a wonderful idea and a wonderful thing to be doing. And she also mentioned other changes that she's been making, especially around the science courses, to make them more accessible to a larger portion of the student population. Some of the higher-level science courses do have some math requirements, and she's looking at opportunities to allow more students to participate in those higher-level science classes, to give them that broader level experience before moving on to college. And I believe she said not all of these ideas are set in stone, and she still needs to polish and finish those ideas, but I really like those ideas, and hopefully she will be able to get to a good place with them and be able to publish the results to the student population. Thanks.
Thank you. Public participation is an opportunity for everyone to have any questions on the agenda to speak. Do we have anybody that has any questions on the agenda? Seeing none, I'd like a motion to approve the consent agenda with the addition of addendums M-51, 52, and 53, which is some trip to school. All motion, please.
No move.
Second? Do you have a second? Okay. Any questions on minutes? Any question on I.B.K., J, H.I.J.K., L, M, and finally the policy N? Roll call, please, Mrs. Slim.
Mr. O'Brien?
Aye.
Dr. Modrak?
Yes.
Dr. Cortalino?
Yes.
Mr. Dotry?
Yes.
Mrs. Fano?
Yes.
Mr. Rappaport?
Yes.
Lynn Supreman?
Yes.
Mr. Palmer?
Yes.
Mr. Grab?
Yes. There's no need for closed work session tonight? Any Section Q, any old business report to the board? Section R, general board comments and new business?
No, I just wanted to say that Christine, John, and myself, we just wanted to thank everyone for the support during the election, and we're just so happy to be able to represent the students, parents, teachers, and the community on the Board of Education, Board of the three years.
We have an opportunity in June, January, also, many are sworn in. Karen?
I'm not sure if everybody saw Montville Moments, but I just want to give a little shout-out to Cedar Hill School. They've been raising seeing-eye dogs now for almost 20 years, and as it turns out, Cedar Hill is the only school in the nation that trains seeing-eye puppies as part of the curriculum. So kudos to them.
Thank you, Karen. Mr. Chairman, I would like to just extend my congratulations to my colleagues on the board and your victory in their recent election. I look forward to their participation, continued participation on the board, and I wish them the best of luck. Thank you. All right. Any public participation on anything?
Go ahead.
Public participation on anything? What, Mike?
Oh, go ahead.
Well, I'm looking for a motion to adjourn.
Oh, no. I just want to follow up. Mike said I want to congratulate Christine, Michael, and John also on their win. I also want to thank Michael for his service to the board, and now as a board member and as a teacher, as a community leader. You've done yeoman's work. You've become a friend to all of us, and at the end of your term, you will be severely missed. Thank you for your time and service.
All right. Any public participation? Motion to adjourn, please?
No move.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you very much.